I will open the special meeting at eleven ten AM. Thank you for your attendance. Do we have any conflicts?
Oh, reduction by.
Oh, um, councillor O'Neill.
Mayor, I've got a conflict on C ten. Um, the subject heading is presentation of draft budget twenty twenty two twenty three. Um, declaring councillors myself, the person with the interest is myself. The particulars of the interest is that, um, uh, as part of the table for new one-off projects, line thirteen relates to Country University Centre, Maranoa annual contribution. And as I am the, uh, the chair and a non-executive director of, um, Country University Centres Maranoa. Uh, I make the declaration, the type of conflict is a prescribed conflict of interest. And the action I'll be taking is to leave the room while the matter is discussed and voted on.
Righto. Is there any other conflicts?
I just got a question about one.
Please go ahead.
Number seven on that same page, decommissioned Bassett's Park boar. I don't think I'd have a conflict with that.
We should declare it and ask us to vote on it.
So we've got some, yeah, you can do that and then then.
That's my suggestion. I can't tell you, but it's only just to get rid of the boar. I know what you're saying.
Can I, just before you move on to, um, councillor Ladbrook, mayor, just in relation to this matter, any conflicts, will you be taking them to the side and dealing with them separately?
Yeah, when they go to vote on it.
That probably should be reflected in the, in the minutes that that will be a. Sorry councillor Ladbrook.
That's okay. Item number C ten, description, um, presentation of draft budget twenty two twenty three. Declaring councillor is myself councillor Ladbrook. Person of interest is myself. Particulars of interest as part, as part of the table for the new projects, line seven. Name, um, I am the chair of a non-executive.
I don't think you are.
As part of the ta- table for one-off project, line seven. That's him. Um, type of conflict, a prescribed conflict of interest and the action. I'll leave the room while the matter has been discussed and voted on.
You probably need to put more in the particulars of interest.
I'm Alana, my wife Alana, is president of the Roma Show Society. And the turf club. And I'm, you know.
It'd be on record a thousand dorms, that one, wouldn't it?
Yeah. Should go stamp.
I'd put it on my forehead. Be better.
So what is your action you want to do with this one? Is it?
I think I'll just leave the room while the matter is being discussed and voted on.
Righto. Is there any other conflicts?
Mister mayor, I'm just wondering, that C ten, is there more coming? Because I note that it says a recommended rates model post-bundle, I'll be table a separate report in this agenda. But this is actually saying presentation of draft budget. So I'm assuming i- is there more coming to this report is, or is what we see is what we're getting? Other than the rates bit? Because.
We shouldn't be discussing the content of the report.
Alls I want to know is if, is the, is the full report, was all masking, is as if the full report's here? Because if there is extras that we're going to get tabled, when we're in confidential, I don't know if I have a conflict.
Um, look through the chair, what you'll have is the operate, draft operating budget, which is, which is this document here that will be handed out. So it'll have, it's your statement of comprehensive income. So profit and loss.
Mm-hmm.
So you won't have a conflict with that. It's a statutory document.
Um, and the other one, I'm just, we, if we, once we receive the documents, um, about our draft, uh, the draft, recommended project proposals, when we get that into a bigger format.
The new capital works.
Yep, we might need to have a moment, Mister mayor, to have a look if there's any conflicts in there and separate them like we have done previously. So if that happens, we'll have to just go out and declare conflict.
Yeah, we can do that if you notice any.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Oh, here we have.
Righto, so, um, so there's no other conflicts? So do we, um, what we have to note? That, um, we might note that, um, item, um, or line thirteen on C ten and line seven be, uh, dealt with as separate matters in the agenda? Because councillors got conflicts and then they can be in the room for the re-
Oh, sorry, yeah.
They've got conflicts, so then they can be in the room for the rest of the, uh, item of C ten. Uh, so I'd like to move that line seven and thirteen be dealt with separately in the agenda on, um, C ten. Separate items of business.
It suggests you put the page number in order because there's seven of that page and seven.
Page one hundred and eighteen, is it?
One eighteen, yes it is.
Could we have a second for that councillor Burkitt? Any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We'll go to the vote. All those in favour, eight zero. Okay, so do we have someone to go on to close? Councillor O'Neill?
I move in accordance with the provisions in section two five four J of the Local Government Regulation twenty twelve. The local government may resolve to close the meeting to the public to discuss confidential items that its councillors or members consider as necessary to close the meeting in accordance with section two five four J five, Local Government Regulation twenty twelve. The following table provides matters to be discussed and overview of what is to be discussed while the meeting is closed. C one, special rate pest management twenty twenty two twenty three. C two, special rates, state government precept twenty two twenty three. C three, rural fire brigade special charge twenty two twenty three. C four, interest on overdue rates twenty two twenty three. Uh, C five, uh, draft debt borrowing policy twenty two twenty three. Uh, C six, register of general cost recovery fees and commercial charges. C seven, draft twenty twenty two twenty three capital projects, discount on rates, uh, twenty twenty two twenty three. C nine, differential general rating categories and description twenty twenty two twenty three. And C ten, presentation of draft budget twenty twenty two twenty three.
Righto, do we have a second now? Councillor Taylor, any opposition? We'll go to the vote. All those in favour? Eight zero. Okay, we're in close. Okay, do we have conflicts? Uh, who's first? Uh, looks like councillor Hancock.
Mister mayor, I'd like to declare a conflict of interest on item seven point, uh, sorry, C point seven. Description is draft twenty twenty two twenty three capital projects. Um, is there a line there, Kel? Sorry?
Doing this one next, are we?
Um, person with interest is Stephen Hancock, brother-in-law. Particulars of interest is the conflict is in relation to draft recommended project proposal project ID eighty six dash two oh two three Mitchell Showgrounds. Replace damage ceiling canteen bar. Stephen Hancock is the president of the Mitchell Show Society. It's a declarable conflict of interest and I, the action I'll take is to leave the room while the matter is discussed. Stephen with AB, um, Kel.
Okay, is the next one?
Um, I'd like to declare item C point seven, draft twenty twenty two twenty three capital projects. Declaring councillors myself, person with interest is GL and JM Hancock, myself and my husband. The conflict is in relation to draft recommended project proposal, project ID one oh nine dash two oh two three upgrade sale yards dump ramp. My husband and I own a truck and a B double. Type of conflict is declarable conflict of interest and the action is I'll leave the room while the matter is being discussed and voted on.
Uh, I'd like to declare a conflict of interest in C seven, draft twenty twenty two twenty three capital projects. The declaring councillor is myself Wendy Taylor, the person of the interest is myself. The conflict is in relation to the draft recommended project proposal, project ID eighty nine dash twenty twenty three. Roma Rural Student Hostel Renewal Bathroom. I'm an executor. I am an executive committee member on the Roma Rural Student Hostel Committee. It's a declarable conflict of interest and I'll leave the room while the matter is discussed and voted on.
I'd like to declare a conflict of interest for item number C seven, the draft twenty twenty two twenty three capital projects. The declaring councillor is myself councillor Julie Guthrie. Person with the interest is myself and the particulars of the interest is that the conflict is in relation to the draft recommended project proposal, project ID eighty nine twenty twenty three Roma Rural Student Hostel Renewal Bathroom. I'm an executive, I, I am an executive committee member on the Roma Rural Student Hostel Committee. And this type of conflict is a declarable conflict and I intend to leave the room while the matter is discussed and voted on.
Yeah, I am.
I could see it.
Item C seven, the declaring councillor is myself, uh, the person of interest is myself. The particulars of interest, the conflict is in relation to draft recommended project proposal, project ID eighty nine two zero two three Roma Rural Student Hostel Renewal Bathroom. I'm an executive committee member on the Roma Rural Student Hostel Committee. The type of conflict is a de- uh, is a prescribed conflict of interest. Um, and the action I'll be taking is to leave the room while the matter is discussed and voted on.
Ah, I'd have to be changed too.
Yeah, I'd have to be changed too. I'm sorry, Kel. Mine's prescribed as well.
Councillor O'Neill, do you think you should say your name there in case? Like you said, myself, but you didn't say your name. I just don't know whether for the audio, I suppose for the video, everyone would know.
The minutes are the true and accurate record of the meetings, but I'm, I'm happy, um, given that you've raised it, the declaring councillor is councillor O'Neill. Thank you.
I have a conflict of interest with item, um, C seven, the description is draft twenty twenty two twenty three capital projects, declaring councillor is myself councillor Ladbrook. Person of interest, related party is my wa- uh, my, myself and my wife Alana. Um, particulars of interest, conflict in the relation to the draft carryover projects. Um, Bassett's Park Roma install kitchen and increase, increase scope. Bassett's Park replace kitchen building, design only, additional funding required. Um, double, and the next one is W O two double three double eight. Bassett's Park Roma identified works on the grandstand box gutter and roller doors. Um, the next item is du- uh, W O double two, double two nine double zero. Bassett's Park Roma, replace ladies toilet and shower block. Um, the next item is, um, W O double two nine double two Bassett's Park Roma that, um, dedicated waterline firefighting. And I'm a KI- mi- committee member of the Roma Turf Club. And my wife is the president of Roma Show Society. And the type of conflict is declarable conflict of interest. And the action I'll take is leave the room while the matters are being discussed and voted on.
C seven. Draft twenty twenty two twenty three capital projects. Declaring councillors myself Jeff McMullin, person with the inter- interest related party is myself. Particulars of interest, the conflict is in relation to the draft recommendation, project proposals, projects IDs one oh five, one oh nine, upgrade sale yards. I buy and sell cattle at the Roma sale yards. It's a declarable conflict of interest. Although I have a declarable conflict of interest, I do not believe a reasonable person could have a perception of bias. Therefore, I will choose to remain in the meeting. However, I will respect addition of the meeting on whether I can remain and participate in the decision. And it's got to go to the vote.
All, or individually.
Yeah, but that one can go to the vote now.
Yeah, I know, but.
But the mayor might need to ask who else has got a conflict on those items to understand.
Who can vote?
Well, you should vote before, well, nobody.
Now, the mayor needs to ask if anyone else has conflicts, we need to deal with yours now.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have a conflict on this item?
Yep.
Righto, so that means you can't vote on it.
Correct.
Does anybody have any wording?
What's wrong?
No, I thought you could vote because no one's declared yet.
No, if you've got a con- you can't vote on a matter that you're conflicted on as well.
So, yeah, okay.
Uh, I'll, um, happy to move that it is in the public interest that councillor McMullin participates and votes on agenda item C seven. Um, including those ones listed, I suppose, because it's not the full C seven, it's.
That's right, projects ID.
Project IDs, um, one oh five to, to one oh nine, upgrade sale yards. Uh, because a reasonable person would trust that the decision is made in the public interest.
I'll second it, Mister mayor.
Okay, we'll go to the vote. All those in favour? Four zero.
That's right.
Okay, do we have the next one?
Uh, I too have a conflict on C seven. When we come back down a little bit, when you're ready, come. Um, draft twenty twenty two twenty three capital projects. Declaring councillor is myself Wendy Taylor. The person of interest and related parties is Peter and Wendy Taylor, directors of Layer Shee Proprietary Limited. The conflict is in relation to the draft recommended project proposal, project ID one oh five to one oh nine, upgrade sale yards. Layer Shee Proprietary Limited buy and sell cattle at the Roma Sale Yards. It's a declarable conflict of interest and although I have a declarable conflict of interest, I do not believe a pers- a reasonable person could have a perspec- uh, perception of bias. Therefore, I will choose to remain in the meeting. However, I will respect the decision of the meeting on whether I can remain and participate in the decision.
Okay, do we have any wording?
I'll move. I move that it's in the public interest that councillor participates and votes on the gender items C seven, project IDs one oh five to one oh nine, upgrade sale yards, because a reasonable person would trust that the decision is made in the public interest.
Have a second, councillor O'Neill. Uh, we'll go to the vote. All those in favour, four zero.
I too have a conflict of interest in agenda item C seven, which is the draft twenty twenty two twenty three capital projects. The declaring councillor is myself councillor Julie Guthrie. The particulars of the interest is that Guthrie Pastoral Group, my husband Ross, my son Nick and myself, um, have a conflict in relation to the draft recommended project proposals, project ID one oh five to one oh nine upgrade sale yards. Guthrie Pastoral Group buy and sell cattle at the Roma Sale Yards. The type of conflict is a declarable conflict. And I would, the action that I'd like to take is that although I have a declarable conflict of interest, I do not believe a reasonable person could have a perception of bias. Therefore, I will choose to remain in the meeting. However, I will respect the decision of the meeting on whether I can remain and participate in the decision.
We have anybody to move that? Councillor Burkitt?
I'll move that it's in the public interest that councillor Guthrie participates and votes on agenda items C seven. Uh, items one oh five to one oh nine. Sale yards upgrade, no good memory. Uh, because a reasonable person would trust that the decision is made in the public interest.
We have a second now. Councillor O'Neill, any opposition? We'll go to the vote. All those in favour, four zero.
I have a conflict of interest on item C seven, draft twenty twenty two twenty three capital projects. Declaring councillor is councillor Joanne Hancock, person with interest is GL and JM Hancock, myself and my husband. And Hancock Pastoral Company, myself and my husband. And PR and KM Hancock, which is my brother-in-law and sister-in-law. The conflict is in relation to the draft recommended project proposal, project ID one oh five to one oh eight. The above entities buy and sell cattle at the Roma Sale Yards. I have a declarable conflict of interest and although I have a declarable conflict of interest, I do not believe a reasonable person could have a perception of bias. Therefore, I will choose to remain in the meeting. However, I will, I will respect the decision of the meeting on whether I can remain and participate in the decision.
Okay, do we have someone? Councillor O'Neill?
Uh, I'll move that it is in the public interest that councillor Hancock participates and votes on agenda items C seven, project IDs one oh five to one oh eight, upgrade sale yards. Um, because a reasonable person would trust that the decision is made in the public interest.
Okay, we've got a second, councillor Burkitt. Any opposition? We're going to go to the vote. All those in favour, four zero.
Mister mayor, I'd just like to double check, Kel, if you wouldn't mind, um, scrolling up. That I caught my first two conflicts were prescribed and not declarable. Yeah, that's prescribed. And the one above should be, one below, sorry. Should be pres- pres- yeah, prescribed. Yep, thank you.
And the one you just read out, I think it should be your brother-in-law and sister-in-law.
What did I say?
You said it right.
You said it right. It's just not right on there.
Our brother and sister-in-law. Our brother-in-law, yeah, 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 I see how it could be taken. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any others? Good. Okay. Righto, uh, move we go back into closed. Um, can we have a second, councillor Burkitt? Any opposition? We'll go to the vote. All those in favour, eight zero. Okay, so Kel, can you put up some? One of the wording, where I can declare a conflict and leave the room, please?
No, two.
Oh, just, just, uh, one oh one.
So it might be, um, it'll be.
It'll be one three seven.
Yep.
Two oh two three. If we're going in order, which gets it out of where it should be in terms of.
That's okay.
Yeah, but at least. Just creating a number.
We're just creating a number and we're adding it on to the bottom of the list.
So one three seven two zero two three.
One three seven.
We're in open at the.
It'll be a brand new line item.
Down the bottom.
Right at the bottom.
Add it to the bottom.
Of page four, councillor McMullin.
Righto.
Yep, you write it in there. One three seven two zero two three. And the title is what councillor Hancock said.
Development of.
It's up there now.
And now I've got the figures because it was good carryover because I'm inside the title. There's no figures.
Well, just adjourn for a minute while we're getting this, um, wording up. Um, I'd like to declare a conflict on item C seven, new project ID one three seven two zero two three. Developing land purchase lot two on RP six oh seven, um, zero seven Roma. Declaring councillor councillor Tyson Golda. Person with the interest, related party is my mother. Uh, part, particulars of the interest, the conflict in the relation, uh, to the addition of a draft project. Uh, proposal ID one three seven two zero two three, developing land purchased lot two on RP six oh seven oh seven Roma. Type of conflict, I'll go with provides, prescribed conflict of interest. And I will leave the room while the matter is being discussed and voted on.
Mayor, I'll move we go into closed.
Uh, we have a second now. Councillor McMullin, all those in favour? Seven zero. Uh, councillor Hancock, did you want to move something goes on the agenda?
Yeah, Mister mayor, I'd like to add a project, um, to the agenda. To agenda, um, item C seven. Um, so it's a new project ID, ID one three seven dash two oh two three, developing land purchase on lot two, sorry, developing land purchase lot two on RP six oh seven oh seven Roma. Be included in the draft recommended project proposals for twenty twenty two twenty three as part of item C seven.
We have a second now. Councillor Taylor, any opposition? Anyone wish to speak? We'll go to the vote. All those in favour? You know, should I be there for adding that to the agenda? Or should I not vote?
Should be adding it to the agenda.
I know.
Maybe I don't vote on it if I've got a conflict.
Well, you haven't got a conflict.
Have a stand. You can have a stand.
You haven't actually got a, yes, you don't have a conflict that we put on the agenda either.
Recorded as that.
Sorry?
He won't, like, it's not on, if it gets voted now, which it won't, but then he wouldn't have a conflict. He wouldn't, wouldn't be.
What did we do earlier when someone else had one?
Uh, the councillor left the room.
It's a bit different because it was already been dealt with.
Like, if just say for argument's sake, it got voted now and we didn't put it on the agenda, then you wouldn't have a conflict.
Anyway, let's go for the vote. All those in favour? All those against? Uh, seven one, if I'm called for division. Okay, now, um, right, so is now on the agenda, do we wish to go into closed? Because we'll be going to close about a whole heap of things.
We've got to deal with this, Mister mayor.
Well, we've got to go into close. I move we go into close.
Yeah, do we have a second now? Councillor McMullin, all those in favour? Eight zero. Okay, C one. Uh, special rate pest management twenty twenty two twenty three. Do we have a mover? Councillor Ladbrook.
Um, I'd like to, um, start checking up there as a bit of a, because some of them, then you'll know what's been changed.
Okay.
No, but I mean, everything is changed.
That the pest management special rate of zero 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 one two four nine three be included in the next draft of the twenty twenty two twenty three budget. That the pest management.
That's a double up.
Excuse me, uh, councillor Ladbrook, did you want the new number that?
Is there another number there?
Uh, it's been provided. We might just adjourn for a minute. Up there, um, councillor Ladbrook, um, please go ahead.
I'd like to move that the, um, pest management special rate of triple zero, triple zero one seven four nine zero two or four hundred and fifteen thousand be included in the next draft of the two thousand twenty two twenty three budget.
We have a second, councillor Guthrie, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak to it? Or against it? Councillor O'Neill, do you wish to speak to against it? No, I thought you put your hand up. Yep. Okay, no one wants to speak. We're going to go to the vote. All those in favour? All those against? Uh, six two, if I can call for a division. Six, uh, C two, special rate state government precept twenty twenty two twenty three. Uh, councillor Guthrie.
It's the second. I'd like to move that the state government precept special rate of a full cost recovery be included in the next draft of the twenty twenty two twenty twenty three budget.
Uh, councillor Guthrie, would that include, um, the on-the-ground projects?
I wouldn't, because if we're talking about just, um, accepting what the state government bill us as a local government, that would just be the special rate, the precept that we get billed.
So on page eleven, would it not, so you're happy that it will not include? Or does it include? Obviously, it's enclosed, so we can't talk about it.
Those figures on page eleven?
Yeah.
Well, that's what we think it's going to be. It could be more.
The trouble is, as we sit here, we don't know what the state government is going to charge us as a precept special rate.
Okay, but are you actually going to put in there cost of carrying out the overall plan? Okay, but are you actually going to put in there cost of carrying out the overall plan?
Well, we don't.
That is, those two figures add up to that.
To the overall, yeah. But we don't know. In case it changes.
The only thing I could add, just for completeness, would be to add a second part to that. And put an additional amount in this for. Because that's our wild dog barrier fence. That does not include the research and the on-ground works. The only thing I could do if you wanted, if, if it was the feeling in the room. I could then also do it in addition. Um, to add a certain amount of money for, uh, our local research and on-ground works associated with this.
Over and above what they, whatever we, we get. They, they charge us fifty dollars, we want another twenty.
Yeah, but that there's coming from, that's coming from us, not from the precept.
So the only question is, just to make it clear, so the officers know what you want put in there.
But we don't know if that's the figure.
No, so that's why we get, that's why.
Been worried that way.
So my suggestion would be to have the cost recovery based on what the state government precept charged, what they bill us, that we pay. And then the second part would be to have a research and on-ground works component that we could actually identify as a certain amount of money. Maybe what's suggested here that we used in the past, so that we're doing cost recovery plus a little bit more for research and on-ground works.
Righto.
So maybe, sorry.
Other question, councillor O'Neill? Um, and maybe we need to go back into closed to have this answered. But what's changed? The, the precept had always been for both, uh, the fence and for research. The government sent us a bill and we paid it. And the, the revenue was generated by the rural landowners. Am I, why are we getting confused in this resolution?
Because we don't know if they're going to pay us that. They might, they're talking about putting it up.
They're talking about putting it up based on the fact that the, the cost of materials, et cetera, for fencing has increased and they've noted. That they actually were in the red this year, so it's highly possible.
But then that's covered by saying it'll be full cost recovery.
That's right, that's what we're saying, yeah, but the mayor was asking.
But splitting it out, I've never seen that before. The, the, what they decide to do with the money is, is up to them. They just pass the cost on to the rate base.
But in the past, we've always put more money on in our, in our, in our cut charge.
So my, my only comment was, should you put in there carrying out the cost of the overall plan? In case there's more than we don't know about than just the precept. And that's up to the mover, what the mover wishes.
Through the years, just for clarity, um, in twenty twenty-two, January twenty-two, when you were invoiced. You were invoiced for three hundred and twenty-four thousand for the barrier fence. And fifty-six and a half thousand roughly for on-ground, is, on-ground and research. So very similar to the figures in the report.
Yeah, so to the mover, should you just say, uh, with added on-ground works and research rather than the amount if it's going to change? That's up to you.
Or would you just have the resolution as it stands?
Maybe I just put the full cost recovering inclusive of ground, can we have a ground rather than a round? Yep, groundwork and research be included in the next draft of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget.
Do we have a second at councillor McMullin? Any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We'll go to the vote. All those in favour? Eight, zero. C three, rural fire brigade special charge twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, councillor Burkitt.
I'd like to move that the rural fire brigade special charge be included in the next draft of the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Rural Fire Brigade AMV proposed amount seventy-four dollars fifty-eight, Mungalala seventy-four fifty-eight, Yilbar seventy-four fifty-eight, Norrington fifty dollars.
Um, okay, do we have a second now? Uh, councillor McMullin, any opposition? We'll go to the vote. All those in favour? Eight, zero. C five, draft debt, debt.
C four.
C four, sorry. Um, interest on overdue rates twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Councillor Taylor.
I'd like to move that council include an interest rate of four percent on overdue rates and charges in the next draft of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget.
Do we have a second now? Uh, councillor McMullin, any opposition? We'll go to the vote. All those in favour? Eight, zero. C five, draft debt, debt.
C four.
C four, sorry. Um, interest on overdue rates twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Councillor Taylor.
I'd like to move that council include an interest rate of four percent on overdue rates and charges in the next draft of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget.
Do we have a second now? Councillor Guthrie, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? Like, uh, uh, speak, no one does, we'll go to the vote. All those in favour? All those against? Seven, one, if I can call for a division. Uh, C five, draft debt borrowing policy twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, do we have a mover? Councillor Ladbrook.
I'd like to move that, um, council receive and note the draft. Um, debt borrowing policy, um, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Number two, approve the draft, um, debt borrowing policy twenty twenty-three. Be included in the final draft of the twenty-two, twenty-three budget papers.
Okay, uh, in that twenty twenty-two, twenty-three on that second point, you were saying twenty-two, twenty-three? Correct? Yeah. Okay, um, right, do we have a second now? Uh, councillor O'Neill, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak to it? We're going to go to the vote. All those in favour? Eight, zero. C six, register of general cost recovery fees and commercial charges. Uh, do we have a mover? Councillor McMullin.
Mister Mayor, I'll move. Council. The council one, receive and note the report to adopt the register of general cost recovery fees and commercial charges commencing first of July twenty twenty-two. Including the cemetery fees as presented. Three, resolve that in relation to those cost recovery cre- fees to which section ninety-seven of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine applies. One, the applicant is the person liable to pay these fees and two, the fee must be paid at or before the time of the application is lodged. Four, delegate to the chief executive officer the power to amend commercial charges to which, to which section? Two sixty-two, three, C of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine applies.
Do we have a second now? Councillor Ladbrook, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak to it? We're going to go to the vote. All those in favour? Uh, eight, zero. C seven, draft twenty twenty-two, twenty-three capital projects. So Kel, which is the, which one do we do first?
This is, um, A is excluding all of these particular items.
Right, okay, so everyone's in for this one. Do we have a mover?
Can I just see that again, Kel? Is that one O? Excluding project, yep, okay, yeah, thank you. It is in there, yeah.
So that's excluding that list.
I was just making sure, yeah.
Do we have a mover? Councillor McMullin.
Um, is that it? The council, Mister, I'll move that council include, one, the projects as identified in the report in the final draft of. Twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget, excluding projects IDs eight, six, dash, two, O, two, three. And one, O, nine, two, O, two, three, a new project ID one, three, seven, dash, two, O, two, three. Two, forecast, forecast carryover projects identified in the report in the final draft, two, O, two, 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 three budget. Excluding the following draft carryover projects. Basset Park Roma install staff kitchen and increase scope. Basset Park replacement of kitchen building, design only, additional funding required. Double work order two, three, three, double eight, Basset Park Roma identified works on the grandstand box cutter and roller doors. Work order two, two, nine, zero, zero, Basset Park Roma, replace the ladies toilet and shower box, block. Work order two, nine, double two, nine, two, two, Basset Park Roma, dedicated water line firefighting. Three, new project Sewer Main, sixty thousand dollars, reference one, three, eight, three, dash, one, five, three, O. To be funded from war, from sewage reserves. Did I miss anything?
Okay, do we have a second now? Councillor Guthrie, any opposition?
No, just, sorry, no, just to confirmation on, um, point one. That, is, is that, should that be eighty-six, two, zero, two, three? Or eighty-nine, two, zero, two, three?
I'm sure it is eighty-nine, I think.
Okay, I'll read that one out again. Councillor. Dot point one, capital project as, as identified in the report in the final draft, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Excluding project IDs eighty-nine, dash, two, O, two, three, and one, O, nine, dash, two, O, two, three. A new project ID one, three, seven, dash, two, O, two, three.
Um, just, just through the tier, just so that we, given the fact you've all put so much effort into making sure that you're not in the wrong, uh, not in the wrong box. Um, now, I, project ID is eighty-six, two, O, two, three is the Renewer Facilities Mitchell Showgrounds.
That should, that should be eighty-nine at the top, too.
And so that should be, you're talking about, um, eighty-nine, which is the Roma Rural, Rural Student Hostel. So it is in there.
So project ID eighty-six, two, O, two, three.
Mine, that's mine.
Oh, that's you?
Yep.
Oh, sorry, sorry. So then we, we mustn't have had eighty-nine down further.
Yeah, eighty-nine's at the top, let's see if it's.
I don't think it was down the bottom, was it?
Yep.
Yeah, no, so now we're missing eighty-six because we changed that.
What have we got? Another one in there? We, the, eighty-six was in there, but we'd missed eighty-nine.
Nine, that's right, yeah, yeah. Thanks, Kel.
You want me to read that again, or? Huh? Yeah, the, uh, the council include one capital projects as identified in the report in the final draft, two, O, twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Excluding projects, project IDs eighty-six, dash, two, O, two, three, one, O, nine, dash, two, O, two, three. Eighty-nine, dash, two, O, two, three, a new project ID thirty-seven, dash, two, O, two, three.
One, three, seven, and I'm fine with second up.
Righto, can I ask, the one that I've got a conflict for, it's not in, it's, um, out, isn't it? Like, I'm.
It's, it's down the chain again.
That one there? You've got it, you've got it sorted?
It's one, three, seven is, one, three, seven is.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so we had a second at councillor Guthrie, I believe. Um, does anyone wish to speak to it? We'll go to the vote. All those in favour? Eight, zero. Now, that's the first one. What's the next one, Kel, please? Righto.
Has anyone had a clue?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we have, um. So. This is seven B. Do we, um, so up to seven B, draft capital. Projects, project IDs eighty-six, two, O, two, three. Uh, and one, O, nine, dash, two, O, two, three only. Do we have a mover? Councillor, uh, Taylor?
I'd like to move that council include capital project IDs eighty-six, dash, twenty, twenty-three, one, O, nine, dash, twenty, twenty-three. In the final draft of the twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three budget.
Okay, we have a second at councillor Burkitt. Um, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We're going to vote. All those in favour? Seven, zero.
Shall I get councillor?
No, well, she's.
She's coming back with the key in a minute and then we go.
I guess. We probably can't go the next one of three, you have to get near it.
No.
Oh, you're right.
I bet we haven't got enough to vote.
Want to vote herself?
No. Vote on the resolution.
But we could actually leave and then Joe will come in.
Yeah, it was.
Very slowly.
She might be a while. Oh, you got to call up.
What's the next one? C seven, C. Draft twenty twenty-two, twenty-three capital projects, project ID eighty-nine. Which one's this one?
That was.
Hostel.
It's the Roma, the Roma hostel.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Just in this, uh, what's that?
No, it's like Joe's back, Joe's back, so we're right.
C seven, um, C. Um, I've called that one, so we're up to that. Do we have a mover? Councillor McMullin.
Mister Mayor, I'll move, um. Council include capital project ID eighty-nine, dash, two, O, two, three in the final draft of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget. That's it, isn't it?
Yeah, we have a second now. Councillor Ladbrook, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We're going to vote. All those in favour? Five, zero.
Get them now.
Yes, please.
So we've got one left now.
What's next, uh?
Seven D.
Seven, um, seven D, is that the stall yards?
D is the one for which the mayor has.
The conflict?
Righto, deputy mayor, if you can.
Oh, yeah, this one. He's a bloody coaches.
Left the room, so we've got agenda item seven, seven D, is that correct? Seven D, can I have a mover, please? Councillor O'Neill?
Excuse me, wait for Julie?
Oh, yeah.
Wait for Julie?
She's out.
Not on this one.
This one, the mayor's out.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Says mayor only.
We've got enough people.
Well, that's what I thought, we've got a quorum.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I'll, I'll move, uh. That council include new capital project ID one, three, seven, two, zero, two, three in the final draft of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget. With an estimate of seven hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and seventy-five thousand drawn from internal reserves and three hundred and seventy-five thousand drawn from general revenue.
Have a second now, please. Councillor Hancock, any opposition? Anyone wish to speak for or against? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Seven, zero.
Um, is that the second of all?
Second, it was councillor Hancock.
It's even darker in the hallway.
This is the big one.
Any more for seven?
It's seven, eh?
Ah.
Yes, eight, and that is, um, the ones for which councillor Ladbrook has a conflict.
Thank you. You got to call the, yeah, George? George?
Uh, just one moment.
You got your key?
Got to call the item. No, you got to call the item first.
C seven, E, draft twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, carryover projects, Basset Park, uh, install staff kitchen. And increase scope, Basset Park replacement kitchen building, design only, W O, two, two. Oh, sorry, two, three, three, eight, eight. Basset Park Roma identified works on grandstand box cutter and roller doors. W O, two, two, nine, zero, zero, Basset Park Roma, replace ladies toilet and shower block. W O, two, two, nine, two, two, Basset Park Roma, dedicated water line firefighting. Thank you, councillor. Um, councillor Ladbrook's left the room. Do we have a mover? Councillor Burkitt.
I'd like to move that council include the following carryover projects in the final draft, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Basset Park Roma install staff kitchen and increase scope. Basset Park replacement kitchen building, design only, additional funding required. W O, two, double three, double eight, Basset Park Roma identified works on the grandstand box cutter and roller doors. W O, double two, nine, hundred, Basset Park Roma, replace ladies toilet and shower block. W O, double two, nine, double two, Basset Park Roma, dedicated water line firefighting. W O, double two, nine, double two, Bassett Park Roma, dedicated water line firefighting.
Okay, we have a second up. Counselor McMullin, any opposition? We'll go to the vote. All those in favour? Um, seven, zero. Any more, Kel? Congratulations on doing that, Kel. You did a great job. C eight, discount on rates, twenty twenty two, twenty three. Do we have a mover? Counselor Guthrie?
I'd like to move that council recommend that the draft twenty twenty two, twenty three budget include a five percent discount on the differential general rates if paid within the discount period of thirty days of the date of issue of the rate notice, provided that A, all of the aforementioned rates and charges are paid within thirty days of the date of issue of the rate notice. B, all other rates and charges appearing on the rate notice that are not subject to a discount are paid within thirty days after the date of issue of the rate notice. And C, all other overdue rates and charges relating to the ratable assessment are paid within thirty days of the date of issue of the rate notice.
Okay, we have a second at councillor Taylor. We'll just, um, wait while. Counselor Ladbrokes is back in the room, C eight, and that's been, um, as the officer's recommendation, councillor Ladbrokes for C eight, and it was moved by councillor Guthrie, seconded by councillor Taylor, I believe. So we're up to, does anyone wish to speak? Then we're gonna go to the vote. All those in favour? Eight, zero. Uh, C nine, differential general rating categories and description, twenty twenty two, twenty three. I would like to move that council, one, receive and note the draft review report as presented by Mead Perry on the ninth of May twenty twenty two, including options, uh, additional options, five, six, seven. Um, we need to put all the numbers in.
Yeah, nine and ten.
Nine and ten. Um, should we put the other three numbers in?
Sure.
So it's five, A or B?
Five, B, nine, B and ten, B.
Shouldn't just be five, A and ten?
Yeah, three, but the one was, five, A and B are basically the same in the different, um.
Yep.
Um.
Including five, five.
Including, um, five, so we've got, uh, Kel, what have we got? Five, five, A, five, B.
Yep.
And I think they should be in brackets because those are basically the same. They're, they were called different numbers in different. And then. Between them. No, uh.
Five A slash five B.
Yeah, five is not, um, five, A slash five, B. Yeah, that's where the change is. Five is just by itself. Now, what were the other ones?
Six, seven.
Seven.
There was no eight.
No eight.
Um, nine.
Yep.
Um, um, I suppose nine slash nine, B in brackets. Just pick, um, ten slash ten, B in brackets.
Now, is that accurate, councillors?
Is, is that clear enough? Just where, what we're relating to is through the chair, just the updated report from Mead Perry, but also reflecting that our spreadsheet has got a slight adjustments.
Ten, is, is, is the top of the column, it was originally ten, B.
Yeah, so, but ten and ten, B, there is a difference in those, isn't there? From where, yeah, so that really should be separate. But five, A and five, B are actually the same.
And, and there's a difference in nine and nine, B as well.
Can I just make the suggestion that you get rid of, uh, in brackets and dashes at six, comma, seven, comma, nine, comma, nine, B, comma, ten, comma, ten, B, because that's what reflects the spreadsheet.
Certainly.
Did you get all that, Kelly? Good girl.
Okay, um.
Mate, we've got two sevens, so we've got.
Yep, we have ten, B, and then just remove the words.
Seven as appendix.
Put that in that report.
No, those two are the, uh, not, not, no, five, A and B are actually the same. They were marked differently at different times in the meeting.
So on ours, it's five, uh, uh, it's just five, B.
Five, B on your spreadsheet is actually five, A.
In the.
Just to use the spreadsheet as the basis.
Yep.
John Paul has to write five, A down.
And then he stopped.
Yeah, well, anyway, just to be, it is the same, but just to clarify.
Not if we're on the same page.
Yeah, that's it. Um, so, um, so we've listed those. Two, in principally support, uh, draft five, A, B, with the intention to adopt this model as part of the draft twenty twenty two, twenty three at the special budget meeting on the thirtieth of June, twenty twenty two, pursuant to section eighty one of the Local Government Regulation two thousand and twelve, the categories into which ratable land is categorized, the description of those categories and pursuant to section, sections eighty one four and eighty one, five of the Local Government Regulation. The method by which land is to be identified and included in its approximate, appropriate category. Three, delegate to the chief executive officer the power pursuant to section eighty one, four and eighty one, five of the Local Government Regulation two thousand and twelve to identify the rating categories to which each parcel of land belongs.
A ratable.
Ratable.
Uh, a ratable land belongs. And then I'd probably just put an extra point in there to do with, um, um, with, uh, five, A, B, um, draft option uh, would allow for minor adjustments to ensure a zero deficit, uh, within adjustments. Because there is some jiggling that has to happen with, um, and that's clarifying that that can go on because, um, all the new data has got to be put into the system.
So just so I'm clear, does that mean you are just putting your option up to the next?
Yes, and, but that's just what all your budget papers will be. You'll get in your budget papers if this is supported. If not, we'll go to another option. Okay, should we have in there as, uh, close as possible to that in case there is a certain? Or, like, if you can't get it one hundred percent accurate? Just with rounding numbers and that, because we've said zero and it's very descriptive.
Yeah, sure, um.
Uh. If you don't think it's needed, that's fine.
Look, uh, yes, so certainly you could say zero deficit or, um, small surplus budget. Um, you know, whether that's a dollar or whatever.
Righto, I'm, I'm happy to put that in there too.
Sorry, um.
To ensure a small surp- a surplus budget, and I suppose it's, it's not even the word small, just a surplus. If we're all agreeing that surplus means anything above zero.
Once they put in the community, it might amount to twenty dollar.
Yeah, it might spit out differently.
Yeah.
You don't want a deficit, you were saying, you want to set it even if it's twenty dollar.
But it's very hard with numbers moving too. Okay, uh, righto, so we've got that. Do we have a second for that motion? Counselor Ladbrokes, uh, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? I'll speak to it. Um, we've, um, council has spent, uh, a large amount of time going over many, many options, um, and I believe that this is the best budget for the Maranoa. I certainly believe that it's taking into many things into consideration. And, uh, and I do believe that, um, that, um, it is something that would be appreciated by the people of the Maranoa. We've got enormous situation of, um, uh, pressures, and I believe what we can do to help the people of the Maranoa is what we should be doing at council. Okay, uh, does anyone wish to speak against the motion? Okay, does anyone else wish to speak? We're gonna go to the vote. All those in favour? All those against? And I'll use the casting vote in favour of the, uh, motion. So that is, uh, five, four, um, and if I can call for a division. Okay, moving on. Okay. Uh, C ten, presentation of the draft budget, twenty twenty three. C ten. Oh, C ten, A, yeah. So this is for everyone. So this is C ten, A, I better read on the screen, presentation of draft budget excluding one-off projects, new carryover projects, line seven and thirteen. Righto, do we have a mover? Counselor McMullin?
Mayor, I'll move that the draft operating budget for twenty twenty two, twenty three, excluding one-off projects, new, one-off projects new and carryover line items seven and thirteen, as tabled, be received and noted.
Do we have a second? Counselor Guthrie, um, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak to it? We'll go to the vote. All those in favour? All those against? Uh, seven, one, if I can call for a division. Do we have a second up? Um, do we have a, uh, what's the next one? Okay, ten, B, presentation of draft budget, twenty twenty two, twenty three, line item seven. Who, who is this one's got? Okay. Uh, line item seven, one of the one-off projects. Uh, new and carryover projects. So councillor Ladbrokes, you, you'll, don't, I wouldn't go too far. Uh, do we have a, uh, sec-, uh, mover? Counselor Burkitt?
Uh, I'd like to move that the draft operating budget for two thousand and twenty two, twenty three for the line item seven of the one-off projects new and carryovers as tabled, be received and noted.
Uh, do we have a second up? Counselor McMullin, um, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We're gonna go to the vote. All those in favour? Seven, zero. Okay, what are we up to C now, are we? C ten, presentation of draft budget, twenty twenty two, twenty three, line item thirteen, only of one-off projects, new and carryovers, um, councillor O'Neill. So is it councillor O'Neill's the only person with the conflict? Right, okay. Um, please go ahead, councillor Burkitt.
That the draft operating budget for two thousand and twenty two, twenty three for line item thirteen of the one-off projects new and carryovers as tabled, be received and noted.
We have a second at councillor Taylor. Um, and, uh, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We're gonna go to the vote. All those in favour? Uh, seven, zero.
So that one's finished, that is?
Special meeting finished.
Special meeting's finished?
No, no, we've got a bit more to go.
What about?
Um, is any more, Kel, or is that it?
We've got a lot more to go, but it's not that one.
So Neil, give the chair the item without notice.
Not in the special meeting, there wasn't.
Oh, sorry.
Was it? Righto. Okay, there's no further business, councillors?
We include, sorry, Mister Mayor, I've just had a thought. In our resolution of our draft projects, did we actually include the?
Additional project?
That additional one from Manager Graham, Sweetlove. We do. When you just said about adding it, I was just. No, thank you.
So the meeting was closed, Mister Mayor?
There we are. Is the meeting, if there's no further business, councillors, is six thirty two P M. Thank you for your attendance.